Ready? Okay. Mayor, I'd like to call to order the Borough of Elmwood Park Mayor and Council Work Meeting for December 9th at 7:02 PM. On roll call, Ballastiri.
Here.
Ficori.
Here.
Pasolo.
Here.
Gollbeck is absent.
Pellegrini.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
And Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Marlene. It's nice having you with us this evening.
Thank you.
It's been a little while. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our work meeting, where as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that that meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the Borough Clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8th, 2021, and published on January 13th, 2021. Motion to open to the public.
Is that motion?
Anyone from the public here to speak at this time on whatever they wish to speak If not, I'll close the public portion. A motion to close the public portion?
Good move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Marlene?
Sir. Okay. So, the first item on the agenda this evening is the engineer's report. So, Tom?
Yes, we, I'm gonna ask to pull A and B. We're gonna do some field inspections tomorrow, just to get some clarifications on the parameters of these two.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then, C is award approval Phase 2 Mola Boulevard. Chief, would you like to, if anybody has any questions?
Yes, 2019 NJ DOT grant, which we originally wanted to repurpose for lighting. We were turned down by the DOT, so it's gonna be paving. This is correspondence regarding that.
Okay, any discussion? Next item is the general engineering budget. Tom?
Tom? Tom or Mike?
I'm sorry. It's a miscellaneous budget for engineering costs that are outside the scope of the normal expenditures. We usually earmark about $25,000 at a clip, and we're about due to reallocate that money.
Thank you, Michael.
The next item is change of scope for the basketball court improvements. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a little explanation on that. Tom?
Yes. When we originally looked at the project, we included your replacement of, I'm gonna say, the back fence at Gold Park, the long, the long rear side of it. We went out to the field and realized that that fence really wasn't in that bad a shape, so we've gotta credit from the contractor and use that to number one, recommend it could sob in the infield, so that we can play on it next spring. Because if you top some of them seated, it'll be too soft, you know, in order for the root mat to develop and all that other stuff. And then also to put the alternate of the concrete bleacher pads in, so we can still do all that, still below the contract amount.
Okay, so basically, we're taking the credit, and we're applying it to the...
Just moving stuff around.
Moving stuff around. Yeah, I was out there the day before yesterday, and I could see where you're gonna need those pads.
Yep.
For the stands.
Yeah, so that way, the bleachers are available, and there's, I think, a state contract, so it's just a matter of order, whenever that money's allocated. They are relatively easy or tedious to assemble. I've seen DPWs do it. It's just, it's a bigger racket, I think.
Yeah.
All put all together.
But if we use that approach, we would have to have, if we don't have the stands in hand, or in the boxes, I should say, we would need those measurements to determine the size of the pad.
Right. I'll double-check the pad size, because I believe that there was a bleacher that Recreation had made back.
Okay. All right, so we need to correlate that.
Okay. The next item is the monthly status report.
I have a question. Mayor?
Yes, please.
In our memorial. Who owns that piece of property? Do we own it?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
That was quick.
Please, I wasn't sure, you know, if we did or not. I checked my...
If you have anything about things that have anything...
Thank you.
Anything that's status quo.
Okay.
Just going through the new stuff, that's in bold italic in my report. The band shell expansion, I have a set of plans that are provided to me. I've gotta do a check of them before we go and finalize those for bid. Basketball court, we just talked about. Traffic signal warrant analysis for River Road, River Drive, the new signal. The warrant analysis is done, and conceptual geometry designs are underway. That's in coordination with the county. The drainage improvements, they will be out there on Monday on Orchard to do that work. The rest of it's gonna be carried to the spring.
But Tom, before you go on, Mike, do you recall, I think it was over Cherry Hill, one of those courts off of Carruth?
Roth.
Roth. That corner there, there was a big pond when I was walking that area.
Was it Roth? I thought you were talking about the big curves in the area.
No.
Not familiar what we're talking about.
Okay. All right, well, maybe tomorrow, we could take a ride.
Is that on our list of drains?
No, I don't think it is. And it might have been caused, well, public service is gonna have to come through and do that road. It's obvious with all the openings.
I believe, because we've got a lot of projects right now, I believe that that is one of the curb, one of the roads we need to do curbs on, but PS is obligated to pavement once we finish the curb project.
Yeah. This is where the two roads meet, and the ponding, one road is paved already, and there was extreme ponding at the junction of the two. Okay? But we'll get, I'll get you an address on that, Tom.
Okay.
It's a big pond, too, otherwise I wouldn't be so concerned, but it's, you can almost go swimming in it.
I did take a walk with Mr. Carr yesterday along Fleischer's Brook. We have a number of issues there. We've got some resident complaints for Paul Court, Sabo Court. We walked that. I talked to our permits guy, and I'm gonna prepare a memo on what I suggest we can do with that. Also looking into the section of Fleischer's Brook at 555, 45 Mola Boulevard, which is next to the deli, Birchwood.
Right.
The county's been very helpful there. That, we're trying to track down who built that wall. It may have been the Parkway. So, because there seems to be some history that, when they built the Parkway, they had to relocate that brook. And apparently, this goes back to the '40s or '50s. And so if they relocated it, and they built it, then one would think that there'd be some responsibility for them to maintain it.
Have you seen that wall?
Yes.
We had flooding with the last hurricane, only because debris clogged that, the mouth of that culvert going under the street. That wall goes down during the storm, and we're gonna have flooding again.
Understand. Yeah, but, you know, I don't believe it's up to the municipality. Typically, it's a property owner, but again, if the Parkway built it, like I said, we're trying to get into it. The county, the person from the county emailed me a link to something like 45 or 30 gigabytes of data between old mapping and whatever, so I gotta kind of pluck through it and try to figure out if there's some way we could get some help, get some help at that wall.
Yeah. All right, Tom. Top priority on that, Tom.
Yes. Garden State Parkway, I've been working with Mr. Engraffia on this, about some properties that the Turnpike Authority is trying to, I guess, clean. So, we're working on that. We're also working on the widening of the Parkway right there at River and Fredericks, and how the county is kind of pushing to have them create two lanes all the way through, where at this point, it's two lanes, as you're going north, it narrows to one between Martha and Fredericks, goes under, and then widens back out to two lanes. And the Parkway, we're just gonna put, widen the two lanes under the bridge, so we'd have basically one block of one lane left, which is silly. So, it sounds like they're gonna, we're gonna be able to do that. The utilities, the utility relocation that the Parkway has to do, they're relocating all the poles between Martha and Fredericks, so that when the county goes ahead and does the two lanes all the way through, that utility work's already done.
Okay, so they're gonna give us the other lane south of the Parkway Bridge?
Yes.
North, north of the Parkway Bridge.
Your two lanes right now, as you're coming north, end at Martha.
Right.
You'll pass Martha, it narrows, goes under the Parkway, and then widens again. With the Parkway project, they're gonna widen from Fredericks to the north side of the bridge, two lanes.
Right.
And then the county's gonna pick up that missing link.
Excellent. Excellent. That's...
A number of proposals, as the mayor indicated, we're gonna go over some of those items tomorrow. Tomorrow, we have a meeting. There's a number of grants that we're gonna go over, and that's basically the new stuff that I have for the council.
Listen, Mayor, if I may, in conjunction with this Parkway winding, there was a request made by the contractor who's going to be doing the widening, if we could use as a staging area, a piece of property to the road, and I am drafting an agreement, which has been circled, been given to both, Tom, don't you get that? And to the contractor, to agree to and sign, and this council will eventually have a resolution for the council to consider, to approve and give authorization for that use.
And the site will be returned back to its normal?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And with all insurance coverage requirements, and they also have to maintain any surrounding roadways, curves, whatever, they have to be maintained and not damaged. If they do damage, they'll be responsible.
Okay. Thank you, Sal. Tom?
That's all I have there. Thank you.
Can I ask that back? I don't really think it's for you, Tom, but I'm gonna ask you or the chief. Chief, remember about the bus shelter? I just took notice of it today. Again, there's nothing there yet, and it's been very cold the last couple days, and as I was passing to come here this afternoon, I saw a couple people standing there in the cold, and I know you've been trying, and I just wanna know, like, what else can we do as a mayor and council to get that shelter for people?
So, we looked into this with the county. They can't put one at Market and Mola. There's no, there's no room for it. So, I think they approved reallocating it to near Veterans Place. And I think Scott and his crew were supposed to pour a pad. I don't know that they got around to it, so I'll have to speak to him about that.
Yeah, if you could please, because, you know, I just, I just happen to be coming here, and I saw people standing there, and it was very cold, and, you know, you just feel bad for people, and I know you've been trying. It's not that you haven't, but I just wanted to know what we can do to kind of speed up the process, because now it's just gonna get colder and colder, and, you know, snow and everything else, and people need some kind of shelter.
Yep. I think it's approved to be moved down to Veterans and Mola.
Okay.
It's just a matter of them pouring the pad, and then, I guess, the shelter is provided by the transit.
So, you'll talk to Scott about it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Don't we have the organization that we gave an agreement to?
For advertisement?
Yeah.
Do they provide the shelter, Scott?
They provide the whole thing.
Oh.
They're supposed to provide the whole.
Oh, Scott connected them.
Yeah, because that was the whole purpose of granting that contract.
Marlene, the next time you...
No, thank you.
Next time you see those people, pull over, tell them to go over to the mayor's house for hot cocoa.
Will do.
We're gonna have a full house.
I thought he was gonna say the...
'Tis the season, Sal.
Okay. The next item?
Anybody else have a question for Tom, the engineer?
No.
No? Tom, thank you very much. We'll see you tomorrow, 12:30.
Merry Christmas and happy healthy new year.
Yes, if I was here, very happy and healthy new year. We're getting better. 2020 was about as low as we can get.
Okay. Ready, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. So, item number two is correspondence. So, the first item, A, is bond anticipation notes. Do you have any questions or any discussions on that?
No.
Next item is the Recreation Advisory Board 2022 meeting dates. Any discussion on that? Okay. Then the next item are the Planning Board meeting dates for 2022. Then, 2D is the Winery Outlet Sales Room for NJABC.
Mike, I'll start, and you'll take it?
Yes.
Okay. This is the old Twisted Elm, where it's a bring-your-own-bottle restaurant now, and they're looking to have a winery type setup there where the winery has a license, and they'll bring that, their product into the eatery, and I guess they'll be able to sell it, so that if you go in there without a bottle, you can buy a bottle. So, Mike, you wanna embellish that?
Yeah. Mayor, it's the first I'm seeing this. I would ask Mr. Engraffia to take a look at it. I'm sure it's...
If there's anything to do with wine, I'll be happy to...
There you go. That's why, that's why we think you should handle this one.
I'll help you on that one, Sal.
Pick the best Chianti.
I guess so.
2D, Sal, and then if there's any investigation required from the police department, let us know, and we'll go from there.
Gotcha.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question? Mike, didn't the Twisted Elm have all of your license?
Yeah, but it doesn't stay with the business.
Oh, okay. It was sold.
It was pocketed.
Oh, pocketed, sorry. Oh, thank you.
Okay. Item 2E is the Borough's 2022 Holiday Schedule. Any questions on that?
Did that include the new, I left at home the schedule. Did that include the new holiday on the, I think it's...
Yeah, it's on, yes. The Juneteenth, yes, it's on here.
It's on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. What it does not include is New Year's Eve, or New Year's, sorry, New Year's Day for next year. Sometimes we add it at the end of it, but that's not included on here.
Okay.
That's okay. Then, item 2F is the 2022 Mayor and Council Meeting Schedule.
I like to suggest, I think we should have two meetings a month, the first and the third, third day of the month, and this way it leaves us the second Thursday of the month in case, in case we have to have a special meeting. I think the council should just, you know, decide, is anybody ready? Don't you agree with me? How do you feel?
I'm with you.
I'm with you, too, because we can always add, and that's what we've done, is we add if there's something we have to do, an important vote, we can add another meeting, or we can even do it before the meeting.
Yeah.
But at least, we can have that extra week to make those decisions on what we need to do. We could do one work, one public, right? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes. Thursday, as a work meeting, the third Thursday...
Are you on board with that?
I'm on board with that.
And what you want, the middle meeting would be a special meeting, Doctor, but if we need it.
I think, I think sometimes when we have work meetings, we have two work sessions. Some of the work sessions, we're here for like 10, 15 minutes, because we have two things on the agenda, and I think pushing everything into one work session, even if I'm here, because I know on Thursdays, I'll say, I'm not gonna plan anything, so I'll be here for the night, basically. So, if we have a longer agenda, it would kind of be more beneficial to all of us in our planning, in our lives, and things like that, so I'm for this.
And if something comes up, a special vote, then we have that extra.
We always plan special meetings, anyway, so...
I think we have to discuss this with the clerk's office. What type of a burden does that put on your office in order to just get everything done within those two meetings?
I'd have to discuss that with Erin and Sinead. I don't think it's a decision that I could make on my own. I could bring to them everything that you guys have shared. I just know from past experience, working in the clerk's office, that it does become a little difficult with less meetings, just because there's a lot going on.
Mayor, I don't know that you have time to wait, because we're out of work sessions for the year, and we have one public meeting left, and the meeting schedule needs to be...
Mayor, I, Mayor, I do know that other surrounding towns, and not that, that means this is what we have to do, but I did do a little research, and a lot of surrounding towns do only have two meetings, and they have, some of them have a larger population than we do, so I'm thinking if it can work there, it can obviously work here if we want it to, and I'm sure it will take a little bit of adjustment for everyone, but I think it would be good, and we're not trying to get out of less work or anything, we're just trying to be more productive in the days that we're here. Instead of, like, the work meeting is almost basically, the bulk of it is almost over already. If we combine two, we can really get into it further, and I just think it would be better. And if need be, if we needed to have a month where we had to have four meetings, then we do. Or we had to have three, we have three. We wanted to do it before meeting an hour, we could do that. There's a lot of options, but I think it's something that this council, and even the council before, has been pondering over, and I think, you know, it's time that we kind of make this kind of move and see how it works. If it doesn't work out well, we can change it back the next year, but sometimes you have to try different changes to see how it works.
And I agree with the chief, we have to do this for next week, because we're gonna go on the agenda.
Right.
And if we need an extra meeting, Marlene, then send the stuff door, you know, not mean, anybody stuck during the week, and then say, this is not, this is gonna be on the meeting, you know, for the public meeting, be prepared, so this way you know ahead of time it's gonna be there. If something shows up fast, that they have to send out to you.
And Mayor, nothing's forever. If we see it's not working, we know we have to...
Give it a try.
Yeah, let's try.
So, would you guys do the first Thursday?
The first and the third.
First and the third?
I'm fine with that.
So, we have the middle, Marlene, just in case, Doctor, but if you need something, we have that date open.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Thanks.
Okay. We will adjust the schedule accordingly.
Well, I can give the vote, Mayor.
I guess we should.
Next week, we vote.
Poll council.
Yeah. Oh, poll?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only, the only thing, and I do understand it, I really do, and we've managed to go from four to three efficiently, but I would still like to have had the opinion of the clerk to make sure that we're not overburdening in them within the two weeks.
This is what the council said. This is what the council decided, so they'll be able to handle it. I know Marlene and Sinead and Erin think it can, but it's not that they can't.
So, it's not a matter of us being able to handle it. We can. That's not the issue.
That's what I'm saying.
The issue is the department heads being able to get us all the information on time, being able to get all the information, like, as it is right now, how many times do we, like, even tonight, we're adding things here and there.
But, not to interrupt you, but then how do other towns do it? It's just, the department heads have to get used to, this is the date it has to be done.
January.
So, they'll get used to it.
Right. Marlene, you'll just have to tell them what their dates they need to get in.
Yes, absolutely.
And those dates changed, and that, then they change.
When the chief has a meeting, the department heads are getting a January date, this is the date it has to be done by. If it's not, then it's going on the next month. That's it. No X, Y, and Z bucks about.
So, your department, you decide what, now what the new date is they have to have, whatever they need to get in on that agenda, and refine that.
Mike has to do it. He has the department.
Well, you know what I'm saying. They'll have to figure out what they, they need that in order to get it on that agenda.
I still would like to talk to Erin, but their, time is of the, excuse me, I'm talking there. Time is of the essence, and we should poll the council.
Okay.
Can I suggest one thing? Can we keep, just because January has reorg meeting, can we keep three in January, and then the rest have the two? Because reorg is kind of like, just a reorg, and then we'll have the work and regular.
The work session.
Just because January is more of a busy month.
And then February is a short month, anyway, so we would get rid of February 10th.
Yeah, the middle ones.
And then March 10th. July only has two sessions, or August only has two sessions. Then back in September, we would remove the 8th, and then we could, like you guys are saying, we can add special meetings accordingly. November only has the two meetings also, and then December will remove the 8th.
You don't need to remove anything now, because it hasn't been voted on, so just poll the council, and let's go.
Okay. So, like, I've never done this, so what, we just...
Poll, go, let everyone vote on it. Call a name off, and how they voted.
All right. So, Ballastiri?
Yes, too.
Yes. Then Ficori?
Yes.
Pasolo?
Yes.
Gollbeck is absent. Pellegrini?
Yes.
Council President Wetchler?
Yes.
And Mayor Colletti. Oh, you don't get to vote, right? Okay, sorry.
But I wouldn't have voted for it without, without talking to Erin. After I would talk to Erin, I would have, I would have had a clear head. That's, that's my only reservation on it.
We have a lot of faith in our department, just like the other time.
Yeah, I feel like it's Sinead and I who will be running meetings going forward until good decisions are made, so I think we should be okay.
Okay.
Okay. Chief, are you comfortable with moving forward?
With what?
You know, with, like, taking the poll, and are we good with this?
Where our council pleasure is.
Okay.
Here, sir.
Indeed.
So, three in January, then two the rest?
Right.
Yes. Unless, of course, we would need to do a special.
Like we always do, right. Thank you, Marlene.
Okay. Making my notes here. So, then, moving forward now, we are on item three, and that would be the resolutions. Resolution, the first, the Borough of Paramus, the agreement for repairing of the vehicles.
Mike?
Shared service agreement. It's a set rate, and it worked well. I'd like to continue that, Mayor.
Any questions on that?
Is this just for the fire department, or is this for all?
No, all vehicles. They service everything, police, DPW.
So, basically, we're going to the same mechanic, getting a better price? Is that basically it?
Yeah, so certain things that our mechanic is not capable of fixing, or are not covered by manufacturer warranty, we may be able to take there, and we have taken there, and unfortunately, sometimes things just have to go to a specialist, but they can do most stuff there.
And by disagreement with the Paramus, we're getting a bulk discount, I guess?
Right, it's a call.
Right, it's a call.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on this? We're good? Okay. Uh, the next item is, um, the shared services with the, uh, the county health department. It's just the ongoing, uh, shared service that we do with them.
Mm-hmm.
Good job.
Everything staying the same?
Um, yes.
Yeah, I would think so. I, I would, I don't know the numbers, I don't know what we've paid in the past, but it, I, the services are all the same.
All the same.
Yeah. I'll check with Fran, see if there's any different numbers. Um, C is just a, a coin toss, right? Is that the, the coin toss event? Um, D is approval of items of revenue and appropriation.
Any chat on that, Mike?
Yeah, anything.
You got a, this is a resolution D.
I just believe that it's money that's coming to us.
It's, uh, New Jersey State Highway Traffic Safety Grant, you know, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Us accepting a grant.
So it's just us accepting a grant. Okay?
Okay.
The highway grant.
Okay, um, item E is third-party tax liens. Any discussion on that?
I know.
Okay. Uh, F is the emergency repairs to the H-back system over at the Recreation Center. We'll have a resolution for that.
Where'd that come from, Dave? You got a number on that? You were up on that roof a long time.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars worth.
Twenty-one.
Okay, any discussion on that?
No.
Okay.
I hope it's cool in the summer.
Um, so, uh, three, um, three G, the emergency resolution for the down payment on improvements, we polled that, so we will not be, uh, discussing that.
I'm sorry, Marlene, what was that?
That was, um, E, I mean, three G.
Okay.
The emergency resolution was polled. Um, H is, uh.
Sal's.
That was Sal's.
Temporary construction.
What Sal just spoke about, about giving the staging area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, and then I is the towers that will, uh, the, will be servicing the police department.
Yeah, what's going on with that, Mike?
They've all been approved, uh, from our, from our standpoint, now the council has to, uh, pass the resolution for the tower, uh, to, uh, next meeting.
Okay, well, how many do we have, do you know?
Uh, we have six.
Six. That spreads it out a little. That's good.
Okay. And then I also, I apologize, but I also had to add, um, three J, which, uh, would have the mayor and council approve, um, additional funding, uh, for special counsel for redevelopment. No, I, I, it was last minute, and I didn't, I apologize.
You just lost something here, Mayor.
No, I just, um, I just got that kind of when I got here. I can send everybody, um, an email.
Yeah.
But, uh, it's, it's for LMB for nine hundred and, I could, I'll, I'll make a copy and I'll send it to everybody instead of reading it, but it's just, um, some addition.
We'll send it next week's agenda, that's okay.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions or want to look at the, the memo that I received?
No question.
Okay, so that is that, and then, um, number four is, uh, departmental reports. Building Department Monthly Report, the Millennium Strategy Report, Municipal Court, Library Board Meeting, and the Board of Health. Any issues with any of those, or any questions? Okay. Mayor, that concludes my portion of this part of the meeting.
Thank you, Marlene. We'll have our committee reports, and we will start with, uh, Mrs. Ballistieri.
Uh, I'm going to say progress, but I do have one request. Mayor, can the, the council, uh, also, and yourself, of course, get a list of the board seats that are up, that are ending?
I'm working on that, I'm sorry.
Okay, because this way we can see how many. I meant to ask last, the last meeting, but I, I was on the phone, and I wasn't able to really hear that much that was going on, but I says, you know, let me ask tonight if we could get it.
Yeah.
Before we get to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I'm working on, I'm sorry, I've been by myself this week.
No, that's okay, I just, let me ask, because this way we can look at it before, before January comes.
Absolutely. As soon as I have that, I'll send it out to everybody.
All right, thank you, Marlene. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Ficori?
Thank you, Mayor, progress.
I love that.
Me too.
Councilman Fassolo?
Progress, Mayor.
Very nice. Councilman Gollbeck, he's not with us? Is he, is he ill?
I don't, I.
I haven't seen him in a while.
Maybe give him a call and check on him.
Uh, okay. I, I, I definitely will do that, as soon as I get home tonight.
Well, maybe it might be a little late if he is, though.
Okay.
Always a good thing to do.
Uh, Councilwoman Pellegrini?
I just have one thing. The residents assistance program update this Sunday, December twelfth, the Azaz volunteers and Cub Scout Troop Pack Number Eight will be doing a second leaf cleanup for our residents in need. We just want to thank these organizations for all they do for our community, because they did one a month ago, and we really appreciate all the volunteers that come out and help our residents in need, so I thank them all. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Wetschler?
Okay, I do have the library report. I'm happy to report tonight that after seven weeks of working with the contractor in all the plumbing, the electrical, the fire and everything else, the library got its CO today. So there. So, I'd like to thank all the inspectors, the contractor, everybody that put up with me for the last seven weeks, busting their chops, to be honest with you, every week, meeting with them on a Monday or a Friday, make sure everything got done. But the library now has a CO as of today, December ninth.
That's good news.
Progress.
Thank you, that's good news. Okay, let's just move along here. A motion to open the floor for the public?
Some votes.
Would anyone from the public care to speak? Yes, yes, sir. Your name, rank, serial number? Date of first born, all that good stuff.
Paul Roberts, two sixty, Washington, Connecticut. To Mayor, I heard the engineer talk about drainage, saying you guys are working on the drainage. Have you looked at the Philip and Elm Street intersection?
I don't know if, uh.
It is, because that is a bad section, because it's just pumping water constantly right there.
Done.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was on there.
Done.
Okay.
Done. Done. It's on the list, but it's not done, done. Yes, Mr. Freitag?
Jeffrey Frig. Jeffrey Frig. Egg thirty-five, Filmon Drive. Um, just, just a question regarding the possible meeting changes. Um, are they going to publish one-on-one as the meeting dates? In other words, the yearly advertisement?
Yes.
That what's being suggested for the council?
Council dates you're talking about?
Yes.
We'd have to publish that once, once it's agreed upon.
Okay. Well, then. And not an alternate date. Between, there was talk about having added an additional week in between to have.
Well, if it, if there was.
If there was a special meeting, it would be advertised as such.
If the workload was there, we'd have to use that week, the third week or the fourth week.
But you're not going to publish it as such.
How could you publish something you don't know if it's going to happen or not?
I'm, I'm just, just asking.
Yeah, no, no, I guess the answer's no, Joe.
No, the only reason why I'm saying this, because the use of emergency meetings is supposed to be for emergencies.
It wouldn't be an emerg, it would be a special meeting.
I'm, I, I get, pardon me?
It would be a special meeting, it wouldn't be an emergency meeting.
Well, I think you're wanting to say.
Okay.[1604.13]